All right, we're going to start this next question with Mr. Kearney. Mr. Kearney, what are your transportation priorities?
Right now, we're looking at opening up the smart train system in roughly eight years. And so what we need to do is focus on development in and around that transportation hub and draw development to that area so we can reduce the amount of people that are driving across town. To get here today, I had to drive across town and had to leave about 20 minutes before the debate started, or the time I needed to get here, in order to get here on time. And so we need to look at how we can improve the transit system in town and make it more efficient for people to get on the bus. Unfortunately, I don't have an office here in Petaluma. My office is in Santa Rosa. And so in order to get there, I have to get on 101 and sit in traffic for a half hour or 45 minutes every day. It would be much nicer and much more efficient for me to read my city council path after elected if I can get onto a bus or train system that works efficiently. And we have to look at how we can improve that and promote ridership amongst our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Albertson, your transportation priorities?
Transportation is an issue here, and anyone who's gone from east to west knows that traffic getting across town is difficult. Traffic will also be affected by the coming Regency Center. Traffic will be an issue in the EIR for the Deer Creek Center. I don't think it's insurmountable, but it will be addressed. The city needs to be looking at its bikeways. You need to be looking at issues like the Rainier Crosstown Connector and how to fund that. I think that that would be a big step forward in alleviating much of the east-west crosstown congestion of Rainier bikes, the buses that we have, that we can try to keep the bus system going and keep that in a usable, especially for those who do not have other sources of transportation, seniors and the firm and the lower income of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to start with the good things we're doing. I happen to think our bus service is pretty good, and I happen to thank the fare and transit and the services we offer, particularly to the senior citizens where they take buses to grocery stores and things like that. I think we're handling that very well. Now, as far as traffic goes, and the smart train, that's eight years away, so I'd like to think more current, I think we do have to look at Rainier again. I know it's been looked at since I was born, roughly, but regardless of that, I think we have to consider Rainier soon, and it has to be state money. It has to be grants. There isn't going to be money in our budget to build a road across town, so we can't expect that. So we have to spend time, as a council, reading grants, checking every grant investor, every potential source of money. And it takes time. But again, as a council member, retired 24/7, I'll be willing to look wherever possible. We need Rainier. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Transportation is one of those bread and butter issues for most people in town, and it's a multi-paced answer. Obviously, 101 expansion with Smart Train, the transit that we refer to. I'm also the chairman of the Transit Committee here in town. We do have a great transit system to get people across town. And obviously, we're reconfiguring the East Washington Interchange, which I have to appreciate. Also, eventually, we should have a subbing crossing. That's going to take a while, but at least it's in the plan, in our general plan. And Rainier, Rainier is one of the bread and butter issues that we need. I've worked on that. I've been drove Rainier for years. I pushed for the project study report when I was on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. I pushed for the comprehensive, for the Rainier being a comprehensive transportation plan. We received letters from state senators in support of design exception, and if needed, I would go to Sacramento in order to get the design exception, which is necessary for Rainier, in order to go to the next steps.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett?
Yes, well, transportation, I'm glad to see that Council Leader Harris also brought up the fact that we have made some progress on transportation, and it will be even more important once the target goes in at the old Tenelworth Junior High Site, that we have improved the East Washington Interchange, and it'll start construction next spring, I believe, or if I'm correct, if that's not right. The Rainier, I believe it will be an undercrossing, is on our plans. We are advocating it. It cannot go forward until the highway is widened and raised. That's what we're waiting for. We need to continue working on that. And the reason it's going to be a difficult thing to fund is because previous development on the east side never collected impact fees to build it. So we are stuck now with that problem ahead of us. And so we're doing what we can. Thank you.
Mr. Davies, your transportation priorities?
Thank you. Well, there's a number of priorities here with transportation. Obviously, we need to ensure that we have responsible 101 widening. A lot of that is going underway. We do need a Rainier Crosstown Connector. We do need to make sure that when we're approving projects, that we're ensuring that there's impact fees to cover the impacts caused by increased congestion and traffic. No one likes to sit in traffic. Anyone like that? Raise your hand. I don't think so. So yeah, there's a lot we can do. We can also be improving our public transit. We should also improve our bicycle paths. I've got two kids. We try to bike to Scholmberger Park from downtown. It's pretty dangerous. So there's a lot we could be doing to improve alternative means of transportation, of course. I support all of that. One of the great things about the smart rail is we've got a quarter cent sales tax, and that's excellent because we can also foster more transit-oriented development as a result that's grant-funded. So we need to continue that. Thanks.
Ms. Bunker, how about your transportation priorities?
Well, I mean, pothole relief cannot arrive soon enough since the city has committed much of its money to nail the bias in the sustainable government awards program. The best alternative we have is to take grant money from the state. You know, grants are cheap. They're inexpensive. They're affordable. They don't cost much, and so this is going to be our best option. I would have to say I am definitely in favor of both the Rainier Crossing and the Coffield Lane Extension. I think it's unfortunate that we've known about both of these projects since probably the early 90s and even before that. And, you know, we failed to stay with time. And I think until we do start to actually stay for these projects, we're going to be waiting for it to develop, and these will never get built. And, you know, I would also add that I'm not in favor of converting every stop sign, intersection, city to a roundabout. You can't get the bigger trucks through them, and, you know, it takes up parking spaces, and the residents don't like it. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Rine, transportation priorities?
Thank you. You know, since the mid-'80s, I've voted for Rainier, and it was always with the expectation that it has freeway access. So certainly, a crosstown connector is important to me. It sounds like Rainier is going to be our quickest chance to get that, albeit sometime off because of budgetary concerns. But as mayor, I want to push and push to try and get the freeway access for that crosstown connector. As far as road diets, we're intimately aware of that within the Downtown Association. I personally do not believe that the road diet that was installed north of Washington has been the success it's touted to be. There's certainly one intended for the Boulevard South from Washington, and I'm very concerned for those merchants as they are that the impact of that road diet is going to hurt their businesses. I think small roadways in town could deal with quieting, but major arterial, no. The Smart Train's great. I see that as sometime off. I don't want to put a lot of emphasis on there. And then ridership on buses is seemingly up on some routes, and that's a good thing that we focus on mass transportation. Thank you.
Mr. Glass, transportation priorities?
Thank you. I am the Sonoma County Transportation Authority Director at this time for this city, and as such, I work hard to keep Highway 101 projects on track and moving. And we are going to see under construction freeway improvements from Old Redwood Highway headed north to Pepper Road. We're going to see the freeway improvements at East Washington take place next spring. Old Redwood Highway expansion is one year out after that, so good construction jobs are coming and keeping the traffic moving. It's important to utilize smart rail with transit-oriented development, which will allow us to access funds through Senate Bill 375. That's the law, that if you do what's called transit-oriented development in project development areas, you qualify then to go to Sacramento and get those funds. So we don't have to look for grants. We don't have to beg. We just have to do what the law says we need to do. I know how to do it. I have the experience. I need your vote to get the job done for you, get our economy and traffic moving. Thank you.
Ms. Now, your transportation priorities?
Well, thank you, Mr. Glass, for explaining the Smart Train and how important it is, and also our FCTA, which is our Sonoma County Transportation Authority, which you sit on. It's very important that we support that in our community. And I was a huge advocate of the Smart Train tax and the quarter cent tax, so it would move our transportation opportunities in the future ahead. Currently, we have a Transit Committee, and we need to support our existing city bus service and make sure that it's scheduled, matches the junior high, high school, and FRJ schedule, as well as the senior citizen, so that they can get across town without having to use their own transportation cars and clog up our streets. We also need to make sure that our bicycle safety is looked at. We had three or four accidents in crosswalks in the last two weeks, which is very scary. As a teacher, I see children that are driven to school instead of carpool, I mean, instead of walking to school or riding their bikes because of the safety concerns of their parents. And I also want to say that I'm a huge advocate for the enhanced let crosswalk. Thank you.
Great. Nice, another round. We're going to take a look at some of the questions from the audience. I'm going to start by kind of combining a couple of questions here. We're going back, we're back in time to 10 minutes ago, where we were talking about economic times. There's a question about, and kind of go at it any direction you like, there's a reference, and I'll put it in the questionnaire point, I don't know if the 40% vacancy is accurate, but the question is, what would be your specific plan to fill the 40% vacancy rates in our business parks? And what kind of business, I'm combining that with, what kind of businesses do you think would be appropriate? So what would be the plan to fill the vacancies in the business parks, and what kind of business would you like to have? Would it be with everybody? Mr. Albertson?
Thank you. I think business needs to be recruited into this town. I think that people need to know what Petaluma has to offer. I'd like to see clean industry brought into town. There's the computer shows that have, one example, the large computer show down in Masconi Center. If you go down and visit and see what people who are either visiting other vendors' displays and tell them that you're looking of moving, looking to relocate, and consider Petaluma, and you consider Sonoma County, look what we have here to offer. And I think that's important, working with businesses to come here, working with landlords who have unoccupied or underoccupied buildings right now, both retail and commercial, and then city staff to help have a synergistic relationship that benefits everyone. And I think that's important. The community has a lot to offer, an employer coming into town. We need to promote that as a city for most tourism.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, your plan to fill vacancies and what types and/or what types of businesses would you like to see come into town?
I'd like to thank whoever wrote that question. I appreciate it. It's a very simple answer. We have multiple buildings that are virtually completely vacant. One of the things that a prospective business will look for in a town is a way to get in cheap. In other words, is their building already there, or do I have to spend all the money to upgrade? Do I have to spend money to build? We have probably a lease to suit for virtually any business out there of a mid-size stature. They ask what type of businesses? Light manufacturing, mid-cap companies, green companies, software, things that can require a lot of space, but not necessarily the facilities. We also have to be aware of water use in this town, as you all know. So if some of the industries we attract, it's nice to know if they're like that. But I think, again, it's going out recruiting these companies and showing them what we have. It's the effort that's not there, not the ability, or not the vacancies. Thank you.
Mr. Harris? Vacancies and types of businesses?
Sure. One of the key issues when any investor wants to come to municipalities is certainty. We have the general plan that shows investors certainty. We have the central Petaluma specific plan shows certainty. We actually have the draft Economic Strategic Plan that will show certainty to the investors. We can use these relationships and the certainty to go to these investors, to encourage them to come to town. One of the key factors inside the Economic Strategic Plan will be a road show to reach out to other, or see why they should actually relocate to Petaluma and show them why Petaluma's such a great place to do business. On top of that, we do have incubator companies that are here locally. We need to reach out to them, and once they are growing, we need to show them why they need to actually come in and put their businesses inside the open buildings that we have. Obviously, with 40% vacancy rate, there's a lot of opportunities for businesses to grow. So we really need to reach out to the incubator companies and actually show them why, when they expand, why they need to actually come into Petaluma.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett, the plan to fill vacancies and what types of businesses?
Well, retenanting an empty business is actually one of the plans that is brought out in our Economic Development Strategy Draft. So this is something that we have already had foresight to research, find out what we need to do, and find out how to go ahead doing it. One of the things, tools we need to really start using in this town is to move into the 21st century and enhance our city's website. We need to make it much more user-friendly and make sure that people who are interested in Petaluma can find out about what's available in Petaluma. One of the things we will be doing is setting up an economic development website, once we adopt this plan and have an economic developer on staff. And in that, we can have the information about what is available, what lease rates are, everything like that. Another thing we need to do is look at relaxing our conditional use permits, or look at other zoning laws that can be relaxed for some period in order to bring businesses into empty buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Davies, again, that's plan to fill vacancies and what kinds of businesses?
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, one of the major reasons I'm running is to try to bring more clean, green jobs to Petaluma. And actually, I have everyone here, I believe, I may be the only one that actually works at a technology company, a clean software technology company in Petaluma. So I'm actually very familiar with the culture and the rationale for coming here. We've got some amazing amenities. And I have already worked towards this on an outreach effort as a member of the Technology and Telecommunications Advisory Committee for the city. I've already been contacting companies to build positive testimonials so we can more positively and proactively market our city for other clean and green businesses. I mean, yes, we've got some road issues, but we're not the pothole capital of the world. I think we need to be much more positive in our marketing efforts, and that's what I think that we should be doing in conjunction with our website. We need to, like she said, Teresa, go to the 21st century. We need to have a Web 2.0 based website, improve that so that it's more accessible for mobile devices. Thank you.
Mr. Bunker, your plan to fill vacancies and what kinds of businesses would you like to see come to town?
Well, one way to stimulate economic growth is to facilitate the planning review process. And this is one area where I actually am happy to see some improvement on City Spark, with City Spark and the Planning Commission be consolidated into one body. It's two going into one. It's efficiency. It's less government, and that makes me happy. In terms of which businesses I would like to see, you know, I'm willing to explore all options. I don't have any, you know, particular biases towards, you know, one business versus another, or one retailer versus another. You know, I'm happy this corporate wants to come here, and I think we need to encourage, you know, more businesses to come to the city. You know, looking around at the business park where I work, I would say that our vacancy rate is around 40% based on visual inspection, though I don't know what the actual number is.
Thank you, Mr. Rine. Your plan to fill vacancies and what types of businesses would you like to see come to town?
Thank you. I think in terms of the kinds of businesses that I want to attract, I like the idea of the incubator concept up at the Sonoma Mountain Village in Roanoke Park. I think we can create our own type of incubator program down here and foster local businesses. I'd love to see a complement to the Santa Rosa Junior College in the form of a trade school, whether it's private, that comes in, occupies one of our large buildings. Although I think we certainly need to re-tenant our large, single-use buildings from the telecom valley days and find a way through economic incentives to help the landlord to create a multi-tenant space. Back when we had telecom valley here, it was a totally different experience. The companies, multinational companies, they would say to us in the real estate industry, we know why they want to work here. We're paying real estate professionals to convince people why they should live here. There's no longer an economic incentive. In fact, some of the developers that have come to town have paid a hefty price for trying to get here, and we need to change that culture.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. How about your plan to fill vacancies, and do you have any type of business in particular you'd like to see here?
Thank you. First of all, what you look at is you look at experts, and we've got an expert that produced the document, and that's what Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Barrett keep referring to. It calls for vacancy reduction through incentives to businesses that provide high-paying jobs. I think that's extremely important, because it's not just filling space. But recently, we did fill space with a healthcare clinic. So you can't build your way out of a glut. We keep talking about the development review process. I'm happy that we've made efficiencies there. I'm happy that Mr. Bunker recognizes that that was a move for efficiency. But we do need programs, and we need to go out and court businesses to come and take up the vacancies that we have. But at the same time, that has to be scored on a system that will attract jobs, because at the end of the day, we can't just fill space to fill space.
Ms. Now, how about your ideas, your plans to fill vacancies, and what type of businesses might you envision coming to Petaluma?
Well, I think I agree with everybody that's looking tonight on the incubator idea and the clean tech jobs. But I also want to say that we are facing an aging population and our medical needs of our community, that's why our health center is being expanded. And I want to say that we need to be more business friendly to these existing businesses who want to remodel their location or fill up some of these empty buildings. And we need to think about their contributions to our community as employers and to the nonprofit supporting community and for our tax base. One of the examples is our Elrose Dental Office. They went through probably a half a million dollars' worth of fees and a lot of processing of their application to just expand their extensive office, which would have been a state-of-the-art school, as well as provide a tax base for Petaluma at an employer, and they donate to lots of our nonprofits. So I'd like to see some of those costs come down when we're looking at remodeling and moving into the empty buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. How about your plans to fill vacancies and what types of businesses might you envision for Petaluma?
It's great to hear everyone talking about...
Turn me off. It's great to hear everyone talk about this, because I'm currently doing it. I'm, I sit on the Community Development Committee for the county of Sonoma, and our whole job is to fill business spots in the county. And so as the chair of that board, we're looking at, in the redevelopment agencies for the county, how we can promote businesses. And so, you know, we can use redevelopment funds to go out and do the marketing that has been mentioned before. Additionally, Sonoma Mountain Village was brought up. I love that everyone's so supportive of it now, because when I was out there advocating for it with the ADC, there weren't many other people advocating for it as well. So I'm glad to see that people are on board now, and I love to see that that program thrives in Roanoke Park, and we can look at how we can do that here in southern Sonoma County, too. Additionally, everyone keeps mentioning medical centers, and I work for the largest employer in the county, and we are a healthcare organization. And looking at how we can work with agencies to come to Petaluma will help the healthcare agencies throughout the county as well.
Thank you so much. So we'd like to start this next round of questions. Mr. Johnson? And we're going to take a little jump shift. We're going to leave the world of economics, well, maybe not entirely. The question from the audience is, how can the council work with our schools and/or can the council work with our schools to promote quality education? So how do you see the role of city government in supporting education?
I think that's a relatively difficult question, in that there's certain areas that the city council really is not so much in their purview. However, as a city, I think we have to start looking at our schools in a whole different light, both from the standpoint of funding and from the standpoint of parent participation. I was, I'm in mentor me, and I just had a student who was at Bernard Eldridge, and I can remember the day I met with him when he told me his school was closing, and he was in tears. There wasn't much I could tell him. I said, "When I get on council, I'll try to do something for you." But the reality is, I think education has its Board of Education. We have many fine candidates now running for the Board of Education. We have, unfortunately, I think, multiple administrative Board of Educations in a city our size, which is a little bit weird as far as I'm concerned. I mean, why do you need to pay all the administrative costs double and triple? So I would certainly say if the council could motivate them to cut some costs on admin and have a single Board of Education for a town of 60,000, it would make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do you see that there is a role of city government in relationship to education, supporting quality education? Is there something you can think of that would allow them to work together?
Sure. I mean, it's not necessarily in the city council's jurisdiction or purview, but it totally makes sense to reach out to other elected bodies, in this case, the school boards, and whoever may be coming to remember for state elections in January. But you need to reach out to other government agencies, just like we need to reach out to the fair board for the fairgrounds property, which is that those groups are appointed by the governor. But you actually have to work with and have to engage with other bodies. So it's important that after these elections, we can sit down and see where the synergies are and see what the opportunities are to sit down with the school board and see what we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Yes, actually, I have been an advocate of this in the four years that I have been on the city council, and we have actually met with the school board at the city council, but it wasn't elected meeting, not every city council member chose to show up. I did show up at that, and I'm always looking for ways that we can work together with other organizations. One way that we have proposed, and we have spoken with our staff about working with the city and school districts together, are in joint use of the school fields or athletic fields for our children, and the maintenance of those fields, and our park maintenance and some of the work people, that we can use those staff people interchangeably at different sites. That way, we are working as a group. We're working together. We are not duplicating resources, and we are expanding the use of the resources we have that sometimes way unused because they're at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Again, the role of city governments or the capacity of city government to work together to promote quality education?
Thanks for the question. I think it starts with communication, and I would, obviously, if I had the honor to serve, first and foremost, I would get out there and communicate as much as possible with the school board to see what we can do together. I was recently contacted, again, as my role at Tech Firm here, by a school that's actually doing some outreach to try to get members from different businesses to come in and talk about science and technology. And I'm pleased to say that, you know, I'm going to wake up a little earlier to do it that day, but I am going to just go out and help and show what students can learn in terms of developing technology. I've got an iPhone application that I'll be showing them, as well as a new product that we're going to be releasing soon. So I think that there's a lot of resources in our community that we can tap in terms of volunteerism to reach out to the schools and provide some educational opportunities that are otherwise unfunded. Thanks.
Mr. Bunker?
Speaking as a graduate of Petaluma Public Schools, I think the schools are doing a fine job educationally. I think the opportunities are there. I went on to graduate from Cal. Several of my classmates attended Cal, Stanford, Caltech, and so very good schools. And so I think, you know, we have fine teachers at both Petaluma High and the Cox and Grumby High, so those people, you know, those students that met at Cal were actually Cox and Grumby graduates, and so I was very interested to see that. Actually, personally, I will be attending, I'm giving a talk at a government class that has Petaluma High on mechanics of city government, and that's coming up in a few weeks. You know, also, I think it's important to keep in contact with the school board, you know, and hear their concerns and explore the options that we have. The main concern right now is going to be funding for extracurricular activities, and that's something we certainly don't want to lose, and it comes right back to the school responsibility. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rine, if you think outside of the box and look at the role of city government in promoting quality education?
Well, outside the box for Petaluma certainly may mean bringing in trade school opportunities, alternatives to the Santa Rosa Junior College. I think, you know, when you talk about the role of government and how we can impact on our educational system, I'm thankful that we've got the opportunity. Mr. Bunker just mentioned that we, as potential candidates and certainly government officials, have the opportunity to go to a school. have the opportunity to go to a school and talk to the students that are learning there. Maybe they want to join a government. Maybe they just want to learn from our expertise in private practice, and certainly, they'll learn about giving back to the community, which is what we're all doing up here. Certainly, I think that the brokering relationship, though, between what the government has between education and the students can be used to guide people in a mentoring relationship within business. And certainly, they can also benefit from the trade work that they did, like the park benches downtown and the streetscape improvement project, where government reached out and said to the students, "How can you help us to build a better product?" Thank you.
Mr. Glass?
Thank you. Well, that's a nice transition because the park bench program in the downtown didn't happen by accident. It happened by exactly what the question asks. Dan Sunia, who is a shop teacher there, worked closely with our redevelopment department. I was happy to be mayor at the time. And we coordinated it with the trade unions that went into the shops, taught these kids a skill, and tried to pass on the skill so we'd have a qualified workforce going off into the future. And I'm proud to have been back on the city council when the regency project came before us, and Mayor Torriette and myself made sure that we reinstituted the park bench program, the regency project once again. So, once again, we'll be partnering with the schools to try to help save a curriculum, and we'll reach out again to the trades and ask them to cooperate and teach these kids how to run the equipment. It's a comprehensive program. Tom Richards in the architectural department designed the benches with his students. Dan Sunia and the shop kids built those benches, and what a great amenity. Every time I sit on a bench downtown Petaluma, I'm proud of that.
Ms. Now, if you please, your thoughts on the role of city government in supporting quality education?
Thank you, Mr. Glass, for explaining all the park benches and how proud we are at public works for continuing those efforts in the school. I graduated from local Petaluma Junior High, Petaluma High School, and I teach on Mary Collins at Cherry Valley Science as a preschool teacher. And I served on the city council when we had a joint meeting with the school board and the city council. I think it was the first time in probably more than a decade, and we had the opportunity to sit down and talk about some of the partnerships that we could do with the school district and the city. And one of the partnerships that we talked about was the maintenance of the parks that are near the school. The school has their maintenance departments, the parks have their maintenance departments. I happened to be in a classroom that has the city in front of me and the school behind me, and the maintenance is being done simultaneously by two different entities, and it's very costly, not efficient. So, we need to do that. We also need to make sure that we keep the public works. They paint all the crosswalks, add all the schools bright orange for safety, and make sure that before school starts in September, that everything is safety. And I think we really need to take that opportunity to continue that partnership.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearney.
So, it was mentioned earlier, the fact that the E-school closed, and as a result, people lost jobs. My mom, sitting in the back of the audience here, is one of those people that lost jobs in the school district because of the school closure. So, I'm very intimately familiar with the impacts of closing schools. The best thing we can do, though, to make sure that we don't have that in the future is to make sure we bring good-paying jobs back to Sonoma County and back to Petaluma. If we have that, that resurgence of people moving back to the city of Petaluma, we won't have the issue of lowered, declining enrollment in the school system. Another thing we need to look at is how we can better use our funds to work with the city schools to promote art programs. So, can we look at the art impact fee and how we can promote art in the schools using the art impact fee? That's just one example of something that we can look at doing. Additionally, every summer, I have a youth intern in my job, and we can look at how we can promote summer youth employment and internships with the high school students at our local businesses and promote that so we can train people in different fields outside of what's traditionally taught in schools.
Thank you, Mr. Alberton.
The schools have a big responsibility here, and I think there's an opportunity to have a working relationship with the schools. Recently, there was a discussion here about the garbage contracts and the city picking up the fees for city schools' garbage. Could there be some exchange there? And it's been mentioned, city crews on the front of a building and the city and school crews on the back of a building taking care of the same grounds or similar grounds. Could there be an exchange of services? The city provides something for the schools, and the schools, in turn, can keep a playground open on weekends. They can keep a gym open at night. They can give the youth of the community someplace to go other than the places they have right now. A place to play basketball, to play badminton, just to hang out. And I think that would be an opportunity that would win both for the city, for the population, for the schools, and the students.